Well.
Nice meeting.
It being seven o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is March 12th, 2024. We are in the municipal meeting room. On the agenda, we have approval of the agenda, approval of the minutes of February 20th, 2024, public comment and public hearings. We have 10 public hearings. We have public hearings on lots split by district boundaries, definitions, net density, seasonal cottages resorts, disability permits, estate lots, fire protection, floodplain management, which will repeal the old floodplain management and there will be a new standalone ordinance, parking lot and driveway surfaces, conditional use and site plan review, mobile food trucks and trailers and seasonal resorts. I'll start with a roll call from that end.
Lee J. Felbin, town planner.
Marty Kay.
Zachary Shapiro.
James Lowery.
Paul Green.
Tom McGinn.
I'm Rich Canong, the chair. Now, I would like to move an item on the agenda. We have some people who have driven up here quite a distance from Massachusetts and they're going to have to drive back home afterwards. So I'd like to move the 9.3.37 seasonal resorts to the top of the agenda. No objections. Now, with that modification, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll go. I'll motion that we approve that with that change.
Okay.
Seconded.
Motion by Tom and seconded by Zach. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Approval of the minutes of February 20th, 2024? I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes as written.
Second.
Motion made by Ryan. Thank you, Paul, and seconded by
Was that here or not?
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous.
One abstention.
One abstention?
That was present.
Oh, yeah, you weren't here. Okay. The next item is public comment. If this is that time, if there's anything that is that you, the public, would like to bring to our attention that is not on the agenda, now is the time to do so. Yes, ma'am. Please come up and speak into the mic.
My name is Stella McCormick and I live on Maplewood Drive. And I just have one question. If anybody on the planning board has been in the past or presently a member of the Dutch Elm Golf Course?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you and I apologize. I'm trying to get my hair and aids up, but I couldn't hear you.
Oh, is anybody on the planning board, have you been a past member, a present member of the Dutch Elm Golf Course? Has anybody had a membership any time?
No.
No.
I've visited at different occasions for receptions or anything else, but not the member.
No.
So everybody is a no?
That would be a no.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move right into the public hearings. It is 7:05. We're going to do these one item at a time. The first one is 9.3.7, 3.7 seasonal resorts. And if anybody has any questions that's in the public, this is just for the public. Is there anybody here that would like to speak for or against that item? You can start, George.
Good evening. My name is George Christelaris and I live at, well, for eight months, I live at 96 Patriot Way in the Villages.
Villages.
Oh, I said that. This is the second time I've done that. The cottages. I'm sorry. I apologize. Me. Yeah, I don't know why I keep saying that, but would just I say that, you know, we love, we love Arundel. We love coming to Arundel. We love it so much. We just, we want to be here more. Now, we're looking at, there were some questions at the last meeting about taxes. And I believe we pay, we have about, how many, how many do we have that sold now? 203? Okay, we have over 200 cottages sold that average about $5,000 a unit for taxes. So we pay, we're good for, we're like an economic engine in a certain way for Arundel. I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? We're like an economic engine for Arundel. We pay over a million dollars a year in taxes. And it's going to be, it's going to, we have about, probably about 50 more to go and that number will increase. We're self-sufficient. We plow our own. We pick up our own garbage. We maintain our entire septic system. And so we're really not any way a drag on the economy of Arundel. Why don't you pick up the charity? And also, we have no schoolchildren in our development. And as you could, as most of us are, except for Ryan, are, we you know, we were over a certain point of kids anymore. So and you know, we have, we are here asking for just an extra 30 days. That is all what we're looking for. If you have any, anybody have any questions on that? We also, we also participate in local charities and I think Jim's going to go into that.
I'm Jim O'Donnell. I live at 1 Monroe Lane at Cape Arundel Cottage Preserve. And I bought, I bought my cottage in 2017. So this will be my seventh season coming up to Arundel. About six years ago, some of the homeowners got together and we said, how can we give back to the community? So we started a fundraiser for the back to school campaign for children. And it started out as backpacks, school supplies, things of that nature. Then COVID hit. We continued to do the fundraiser every year and we switched it over to gift cards. So now we contribute gift cards to Staples, Walmart, Kohl's and some of the other places that schoolchildren can get their school supplies from. Gift cards, we give them to Wendy Lang, the Director of Social Services. She distributes them to the families in need. The other thing that we do as a community is we're very active in a fundraiser for the COS, the Community Outreach Service, which provides year-round food for people in need. And it services Kenny Bonk, Kenny Bonkport and Arundel. And last year, we contributed over $5,000 in donations to that organization. So we feel like even though we are not here year-round, we are still members of the community. And for that reason, we just, we just want to pick up an extra month of usage. We are homeowners. We're not the developer. Last year, the developer turned over the running of the association to a new board of directors. George and I are on the finance committee. Ryan is on the board of directors. So you're not dealing with the developer anymore. Unfortunately, he passed away. Joe Paleini passed away during COVID. His wife Faith passed away just recently. The homeowners are running the organization and we're coming before you as members of the community to see if we could get one more month opening, April 1st.
Okay, I should, I should point out, because I don't have the paperwork on it. The issue before us is whether or not we will grant them 30 days additional time. They want to go right now, they cannot get in there until May 1st. They want to be able to get in there starting on April 1st. And that requires a change in the ordinance.
Hi, my name's Ryan Lawler. I'm a member of the HOA board at the cottages. I work for the developer, but I'm in no way representing them. I just representing the homeowners and, you know, most of the homeowners would like to be able to use the cottage for the month of April. And we don't want any interruption at all with the town of Arundel or kids in the school or anything to that nature. It's strictly just to be able to come and use the cottages for the month of April. And any, anything that we can do, you know, to help that or show that that's all our intent is, we're more than welcome to, you know, provide.
Does anybody else from the public have any comments that they would like to make? Okay, if you gentlemen would let these women come up and
That's fine. I can stand. I've been sitting all day.
Hi, I'm Sharon Bennett. I live in Maplewood Drive, Clearview Estates. I
Please, please speak into the mic. It won't record otherwise.
Okay. I just have a quick question. I don't have a problem because I don't live near them, but I mean, how would that affect like campgrounds?
This
Or is this totally
This is a completely separate issue and will not, this is just about whether or not we're going to change the opening dates from May 1st to April 1st.
I, just in my opinion, if they don't have children, they're not going to affect our school system. Me personally, I don't see a problem. That's my opinion.
Okay. Diane, you had a comment?
Diane Robins Mokas. I haven't made up my mind how I'm going to vote about this ordinance, but you only got part of it because the definitions affect them as well. So that part of it, if they want to stay for that, they'll have to stay because you don't let people talk. I sat on the committee. I had a very good relationship with the person who started this development. I didn't believe him at first. I had my doubts and I went back and I talked to him after he built the very beginning of the seasonal cottages and I told him I was impressed. And for those of you that know me, it takes a lot. I am concerned though because I spent over a year and a half going to planning board meetings and having joint meetings about the length of time that seasonal cottages should be open. There was a lot of concern about impact on fire department, humongous impact on kids. And we're kind of pushing the envelope now when we're opening up in April. Because you're open at the beginning of the year. So in some cases, you're talking a couple of months. I don't want to see the town impacted by a bunch of kids. I don't have any issues with kids. I have my own. But this was sold to the town as a very specific project. The original project was only open and the original vote was to only have it open for six months, six months. That was it, six months. Then they asked for some additional time. I believe it was in the fall because I believe they were supposed to be closed by November 1. They wanted to be closed by December 34th so they could be here for Thanksgiving and Christmas. Okay. But now we've, so that added six, that's eight months. Now we're up to nine months. We're almost to the point now where somebody can argue that this isn't seasonal anymore. And that concerns me. It has nothing to do, it's not personal. It has everything to do with what happens with schools. You know, if the school decided to change their dates and say, okay, we're going to end school in May, we're talking about one month. That could have a real impact on the town. So I want you to understand when some of us question it, that's why. Currently today, 80%, and you see it too, 80% of our taxes go to the school. And I know that you pay a tremendous amount of taxes. I've been in the development. I've seen your swimming pool and your great room where you guys have your parties and stuff. And I know that you do good things. I don't question you guys. I question how close we're getting to this no longer being seasonal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that. I would say about 50% of the people who are at Cape Arundel are retirees. They go to Florida. They go to South Carolina. They go south. The impact of people using it in April is going to be minimal. There's not going to be that many people. There'll be people like George and myself come up from Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Rhode Island. It's not a big impact of people coming into the facility. The situation with the schools, that's not going to change. We, you, people in the Cape Arundel have other places where their kids go to school. They're not going to be looking to put their kids in the school system. It's just not going to happen.
And there's a big exodus in September where people go home, kids go to school. And the only way that you could possibly do it is if someone establishes residency and rents for four months like we have now. I mean, that could happen, but it hasn't happened. And I guess in seven years, we haven't had one child from Cape Arundel go to school in Arundel. Ryan, am I correct on that?
Yes, as far as I know. And I totally understand what people's concern about, you know, this is just the HOA that's coming to you at this point. I totally understand the past of the developer coming and it feels like we're creeping into a situation where could get to that point, but I don't think we're at that point. And I don't think this month of April is going to affect that at all. I don't know if there's anything we can do. I did email the superintendent just to let them know what we were looking to do and if she had any concerns with it. I didn't get a response, but if there's anything we can do to prove our intent is not to have kids in the school system.
We are, we are acting on a petition that was presented to us to have this question. So we're going to have a public hearing and it will be on the warrant for the town, warrant for the citizens of the town to vote on. This was not something that the planning board did or the Board of Selectment. This, we were contacted by people and said, we'd like to get this going forward. And we looked at it, we can get it onto the warrant in time. The option would have been to make you jump through hoops and get signatures and everything else. It's, you know, it's just as easy to, let's put it on the warrant and find out what happens.
Sure. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any, any other comments from anyone? Hearing none, I will close through the chair. Got a question?
This is not the time to discuss any of the issues. We will do it after.
Question. No?
Unless it's for the, unless it's for us and my answer will still be the same.
It's for the board.
Our discussion takes place after the public hearings are done.
Okay, this is for the board, not
Okay.
Okay.
But no, we still have to wait until after the public hearings.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public hearing, nine point, I'm sorry, 2.4 lots split by district boundaries. We have had an issue with a couple of lots that have come before us that are in two separate districts. And the question becomes one of, of how we allow them to look at the land and in terms of measuring how much is available. Because it's split between a business district and a residential district. And we I'm correct on that, right, Lee J? So far?
That's correct. Yes.
And the question becomes whether or not we change the ordinance to allow the residential district to say that there's enough land available because there is land available on the lot, but it's in the other district. It's in the BI district. Or, but that would happen in any situation where the lot was split. You would look at it and say, what's the, what's the use that's going to be looked at? Can they use the other land to, not for, to put a building on, but to use it as part of the calculation for what they can put into the primary zone? And if I'm wrong, Lee J. will tell me.
No, you're correct.
Thank you. So is there anybody that has any questions or comments about lots split by district boundaries? Comments that you would like to make about it for or against? Come on, Diane. Diane, I would be surprised if you didn't.
At least I read them.
Yeah.
So I understand what you're doing. It kind of makes sense. So this could happen if you had a piece of residential which also had part of it in a business district.
Correct.
One of the things that I don't see here or that I question is that you're talking about the space and bulk standards.
Okay.
If you've already had a project or a subdivision go through and you approve this and you allow them to use a bulk and space standards that was in existence at that time. And the bulk and space standards change. And they decide that they want to take some of that land away and use it in that other zone. Would that be allowed?
The way the language reads, it says, when a parcel of land is split, zoned, and the development project or subdivision is proposed, the entire parcel shall be recognized as the zone in which the development is proposed for the purpose of utilizing the space and bulk standards, as you noted. Of the zone in which the development is proposed, however, the proposed development shall not encroach into the other zone with a use that is not permitted in that zone.
Okay, so if you took, we'll take residential. So if you took residential and you used your business zone piece to do your bulk and, and space standards, you would not be able to use that business because you changed it to residential?
No, there's a difference between residential and commercial. Commercial or non-residential, you use, you don't use space and bulk standards. You use lot coverage issues. There's a difference because with residential, you're using density as to the number of units that are allowed per an acre. And in a commercial zone, you're allowing a certain amount of coverage of the parcel by a development. Two different, two different standards altogether.
All right. So now this really doesn't make any sense to me. So you're saying that this standard would only be used only for residential pieces of property? Nothing in a business or SP?
Correct. So you have a, in many cases, we have split zones.
Oh, yeah.
And those split zones happen to be residential and part of the property and commercial and the other. What this is, what this is in fact trying to do is allow the entire parcel to be looked at for residential density requirements. So that, for example,
Okay, wait a minute. Sorry. You just said if part of it was residential and part of it was commercial.
That's correct. But what we're saying is, I wish I had something to draw on. If you have a large parcel and it's split zoned, rather than saying, well, you can only use the density, the space and bulk requirements for your residential in the residential, it's saying you can use the entire acreage.
That's what I just asked.
Yes, to calculate the residential.
But you can't put residential on that property.
Right.
And in the commercial part.
Correct.
In a commercial part.
But my question, my question was, is if that space and bulk standard changes, are we going to have someone come back? And now want to say, okay, the bulk and, and space standards changed. I have enough in my residential. I don't have to use my business piece anymore. I want to use that for business now. Are they going to be able to do that?
In the business zone, yes.
Yes.
Not in the residential zone.
And, and somebody could theoretically do that now, just with a lot division if they had frontage and other requirements for say the, you know, assuming, you know, you have one to the front, one to the rear, somebody could, you know, you can do a lot division and not go through subdivision and split a lot that may otherwise, or may also be split.
No, I think you're missing my point. And listen for a minute. We have many pieces of property that go business, residential, residential, business. If we allow them to use the business piece for the bulk and space of the residential and the bulk and space changes for residential, why should they be allowed to change the whole subdivision?
We don't, we don't have bulk and space for residential. Bulk and space is strictly for business. Residential is determined by net density. How many houses can you put? And what we've looked at is said, you're in a two-acre zone and you've got five acres. You can only put up two pieces of property. But if you've got some, some business land in another part, in another part of that same lot, you can take that land and say, we're going to use that land to qualify to be able to put three houses in there instead of just the two.
Right. And I understand that. But what I'm having a problem with is if the standards change.
If the standards change, not, it's not affecting anything that was done on the subdivision. The subdivision standards will stay the way they are when the subdivision is created. So it would not have an impact on anything.
So if the subdivision standards said that they had utilized, okay, we're going to, you've got, use a hypothetical. You've got 20 acres of residential and 20 acres of commercial. And you had to use 10 acres of your commercial to satisfy your residential in order to put in the number of homes you wanted to put in your subdivision.
Okay.
That 10 acres would always stay part of that subdivision?
It's not part of the subdivision to start with.
Well.
It's just used to, to
To satisfy the bulk standard.
To satisfy the The density standards. Yes.
Would they later, if the density changed, be able to just go into the subdivision and say, okay, it changed. Now we're going to take that 10 acres and use it for something else now?
I think that could happen to any subdivision.
Well, that's my concern. My concern is, is that we, we go through great lengths. You guys have 5 million meetings on a subdivision.
This isn't asking about what's going to happen in the future. It's that, this is looking at finding a
Well, the problem is, is that some of these things should look at what could happen in the future. So if you're going to allow them
If it did change, then they could have the right to amend the plan and, and use some, if they had any space available. Usually it tells them subdivision, they're maxing out their property and then they're done, they walk away. So for them to, like, if it's a change in 10 years, for them to come back and say, oh, I think I could, I could have gotten one more space in there. That developer is long gone. It's just not going to happen. It's already dated. Then they'd have to, have to figure that out with all the current developed properties.
Okay, so with the bulk standards, you make them deed that property to, as open space or whatever that goes with the development?
Yeah. So the ordinance was changed two years ago. I think I, I came in just as it was being changed. And what it says is if you're doing over four lots, you have to cluster. You're required to cluster. So they can't take the open space all of a sudden later on and go, oh, we want, we got, you know, the, the density requirement went from 20,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. So we can double the lots. You can't because you had to cluster the development to begin with, which means that that other land is either being put in conservation or being held aside for that purpose.
Thank you. And that's what, I just wanted to know what the mechanism was to ensure that if you're allowing them to use this other property, that essentially it wasn't going to get used twice. And I know that there could be cases where somebody could challenge that.
I'm going to, I want to caveat that, Diane, in the sense that it can't be used twice for the residential issue. But if that other parcel is zoned DB1 and someone wants to put some sort of a use back there that is a commercial use, a non-residential use in the DB1 zone, they will still be allowed to do that.
Even though the property was used to satisfy the subdivision bulk standards?
Because you're dealing with, you're dealing with apples and oranges. The apples being, the residential deals with density and the commercial, non-residential deals with and the commercial, non-residential deals with lot coverage.
Okay, then I would have to ask, as somebody who lives here and doesn't wanna have to deal with these legal issues, why would we want to do this?
We would want to do this, from my perspective, the reason that we wanna do this is that we have two lots. One's a business, one's residential. The only, the only option, if we, other than this, is to collect enough signatures to change that business lot into residential, and then we're gonna have spaghetti strips of land running up and down through our business district, and I think that's a terrible idea.
Well, that's almost better than having them use it and say, I can use it for this, and then five years later, putting a business on it and double dipping. That's, to me, that's just double dipping with your land.
I don't think that's what Lee J. was trying to convey.
No.
Ultimately, if if a, the portion of land that was in the other zone were to be used for density reasons, then that would be, you know, stipulated on a plan and dedicated for that density. So then, it would, it would need to be reevaluated, and I wouldn't be in favor of being able to double dip, like you said, of using, using that, you know, say, second zone for, you know, use in the first zone, and then also being able to use it for use in the second zone. I I think that would have to go through planning board review, and I don't think many people, on this board at least, would go for that.
At least I, you know, I read it. But that was my, that was my concern. My concern was, is that if things change, are they gonna come back? And essentially, that person gets, to put it financially, double the worth of that property, because, okay, well, I used some of this, oh, now I'm changing it, and I'm gonna bring it back over here.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Any other questions on lots split by district boundaries? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on two point four, and we will continue on in section three. Definitions. Net development density, seasonal cottages, seasonal resorts, new floodplain definitions. Most of the, well, the new floodplain definitions are just the result of a new ordinance that, who gave us that ordinance?
The new ordinance?
The new one.
That, so the floodplain regulations are are regulated by uh, the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA, uh, which we hear a lot about these days with the storms and the impacts that we're getting. They determine what the floodplain is, and um, they also develop the regulations around the floodplains. Um, in nineteen, in nineteen, dating myself. In two thousand seventeen, they proposed new maps and new regulations for all of the state of Maine. All the rest of the state of Maine adopted those regulations at that time. York County as a, well, towns in York County challenged the FEMA regulations and FEMA mapping, disagreed with the new mapping, and so they had to go through a process that has lasted four years, four plus years. Um, because certain towns challenged it, the federal government said the whole county cannot adopt their maps until everything has been exhausted. They are now telling us that everything has been exhausted, and you need to get these in place by July seventeen. Um, so what we're, what I, what I have proposed, because if you look at the actual ordinance, their entire citation system is very different than the zoning ordinance citation system. So the easiest and less intrusive way for us to deal with it would be to delete the floodplain regulations from the zoning ordinance and have the town adopt a standalone document. And that's what's being proposed.
This is the one that's coming from FEMA.
Correct.
And in it, it's gonna have all of these other definitional changes that we're talking about in section three.
Correct.
Was that confusing enough?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I don't want it to. I love it when Diane shows up at a meeting. Any other comments on section three?
Before I get too far, I wanna make sure I have them right. So I have net development density, because these things aren't labeled.
Yeah.
The seasonal cottage, seasonal resort. And does the other one start with containment wall?
That's part of the um, FEMA regu- FEMA's FEMA definitions that are gonna be incorporated back into the ordinance, just the definition.
Of this?
Just the definitions.
Yes, that's just the definition.
That we don't currently have in the zoning ordinance.
Okay, so are these the definitions?
Yes.
Alright. Now I'm ready.
Okay, take it away.
So, we'll start with nev- net development density first. So we changed it to net residential acreage, because it was density before. And then net development density. Was there some reason why we took wetlands out, or is the wetlands considered part of the hydric soils?
Wetlands are part of hydric soils, that's what wetland is. Um, if you, I I don't wanna get ahead, I know you have more questions. If you look at the two definitions, the one that's struck through.
Yep.
And the one that's, um, I don't actually think, yeah, is the other one underlined? Um, because it's already existing. There were two definitions in the zoning ordinance that were almost identical.
Okay.
And so what we were suggesting, what I was suggesting is eliminating one, because one is a little more restrictive, the one that we're keeping, than the one that's being proposed to get rid of.
Okay, then I'm all set with that one. And I am all set with the seasonal cottage, seasonal resort, I think I've kicked that one across the wall a couple more times. The only thing I, I think the only thing I questioned on the one that starts with containment wall.
Yeah.
Well, there were a couple of things. Under the section Existing Manufactured Home Park and Subdivision, says a manufactured home park or subdivision that was recorded in the deed registry prior to the adoption date of the community's first floodplain management regulations. Should we not have a date there as to when that was done? Because otherwise, you're gonna research this every time this comes up.
I suppose you can. Um, that was taken straight from the federal regulation.
Yeah, well, I see how the federal government handles their business, thank you very much. Don't go there. But for us, as a town, in order to ensure that everybody understands what that date is, should that date not be incorporated into that definition if we know what that date is? And we must know what that date is.
I I don't, I've, I've only been here three years, I don't have that long of a history with.
Right, but, and this is my point. My point is, is that we all change, we all evolve, we all grow old, we go away. And new people come in. And then they have to follow these regulations, and if it's tied to a date, but the date isn't there, then it's left for somebody to find a date they think is right, or hope that somebody gives them the right date. Would it not make sense, since we're gonna mess with this anyway, to find out what that date is and to incorporate that date into this at this point?
Okay, uh, we will take that into consideration when we get to it.
Thank you. The last page, under Regulatory Floodway. It just says Regulatory Floodway, the channel of a river or other water course and the adjacent land areas that must be reserved in order to discharge the base flood without cumulative increasing the water surface elevation more than a designated height and. Is it and because we're doing B?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure, because it didn't really flow. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Any other questions on section three? Hearing none, we'll close the, the hearing on section three, and we'll move on to section four point nine, disability permit. If I remember correctly, this is for someone who has a house that needs to create entryway access. And the, and in order to do so, they're going to have to occupy part of the setback area. So if they wanna put in a ramp or something, they would have to, some of that ramp might end up being in the, in the setback. We're, we're looking at it saying, well, we'll just change the ordinance, so that's an allowed situation, and it doesn't create a problem.
Yes, so the, the, um, our current ordinance requires someone wanting to put in a handicap ramp um, to go to the planning board, come, come to you folks for review and approval, which is costly and lengthy. The state law allows for the code enforcement officer to just issue a permit for that, which, you know, if someone is coming home from the hospital and they need a ramp, and you know, they, they, they have to go somewhere, because it's gonna take six weeks for that ramp to get put in. Um, doesn't make a lot of sense. And so what we're, what we're proposing to do is to change that from coming to the board for review and approval to just allowing the code enforcement officer to issue the building permit, which again, is encouraged and allowed under state law.
Any questions, comments? Come on, Diane.
Just a clarification, and maybe it should be clarified in this. Is this limited to a ramp? Or say that they wanted to add an elevator to the house because they needed the elevator to get the person in?
Any, any handicap accessibility.
Okay. But regardless of what it is, it would have to be removed?
That is correct.
When that person no longer lives in that home?
That is correct.
Let's see if that happens. The ramps usually happen, but if somebody puts an elevator on their house, they're not gonna leave it.
I don't think anybody will put an elevator on their house.
You'd be surprised.
I I'm, I definitely, I definitely would be surprised, I just, I would be surprised if anybody did it. It's like. Okay, any other questions on section four point nine, disability permit? Hearing none, that public hearing is closed, and we will open section five point one, estate lots.
Sorry, trying to take minutes and, and and talk about this. So the estate lots, um, if you look at the current wording, um, in the estate lots, it talks about the designated fifty-foot access strip. Um, what it doesn't do right now is re- um, define or or indicate the, how deep that has to go in order to um, be an actual estate lot. So someone could um, say, well, I've got an extra fifty feet here on the front of my property, and I'm gonna go in twenty-five feet and create another lot, theoretically. What we're trying to do is, is um, require that the depth of that drive access and creation of the estate lot has to meet the same depth as whatever the frontage requirement is in that zone. So if it's two hundred feet, you have to go back in two hundred feet to the back lot, which would be your estate lot. It just further tries to define that you can't put a fifty-foot strip in and have a house sitting next to another house and call that an estate lot.
Any questions on five point one? Yes, ma'am. Oh. Okay, we will close the public hearing on five point one and open the public hearing on five point seven, fire protection.
Okay, um, the fire protection piece um, is what would be the second piece of the change from requiring, as you recall, subdivision regulations do not have to go to to public, uh, to um, town meeting. Um, they are a regulation that this board has the authority to change. And last year, we made a change that um, basically said any new subdivisions, you need to have, um, you can no longer have cisterns and fire ponds, because they're a burden on the town from a dollar standpoint over the, over time for maintenance. And if they're not maintained, then uh, someone goes out to fight a fire, there may not be water in that cistern. So um, we did that and made that change last year in the subdivision regulations. These amendments are intended to do the same uh, in the zoning ordinance, so that they're consistent with each other. And one set of ordinances is not contrary to the other set. And so what it's suggesting is that with residential development, you no longer can have cisterns or fire ponds that must be um, sprinkle, individual sprinkler systems.
Questions, comments? Come on down, Diane.
Great.
And I.
You guys need to put this in a bigger font. So fast. Alright. Under five, seven, one, since it looks like some of the language changed, is that June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen date still applicable?
I'm sorry, let me get to that.
I believe it is, because we changed it in the subdivision, not in the ordinance itself.
Okay, I just wanna be sure.
Yeah, unli- unless, unless we're specifically changing something, the date of adoption won't change for that section.
Okay. So that's just a statement. And you took the one off the residential subdivisions that had H1, then it got crossed out, but it's still indented like it needs to have a. Is that just because you changed it and you just haven't formatted it? Un- under H?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it and I'm trying to recall. Because this section is, if you look at, just for example, um, the next page, we had, for whatever reason, we had font issues when we were trying to, it had to be converted.
Oh, yeah, you don't, you don't wanna hear what I have to say about the second page.
Well, we tried to correct, we tried to correct as much as we could, however, if the intent is there, um, we can correct it if it's approved, and it doesn't have to come back to town, town meeting, because we're not trying to um, manipulate it in any way other than.
So as long as the H1 is just a formatting, eight or more lots, not an issue.
Correct.
Page thirty-seven. It goes, it goes, can, it says, well, the thirty-six ends with probate, family division consisting of eight lots or more. And that's A. But then it goes to what looks like one and two.
Cor- correct. I'm gonna need to look at the, at the, um, I didn't bring my ordinance in with me tonight, I didn't think I'd need.
Alright.
Um, but, have you got your ordinance?
I got it.
Oh.
And I'll, I'll lecture you. You might wanna make sure you have that on you. If you're gonna come to the meetings, you should have your ordinances and your street design standards.
Apologize, I left it in the other room.
He, he has it, I just gave him one.
Don't stick up for him, Paul, it won't do, it won't do you any good.
I have.
So the first, the first paragraph, it says.
Yes, so.
It says B E T W E E A.
It should, it, yes, it should, um, it should.
Should say between.
One, A, and then, um, B, where it says between four and seven lots.
So that should be B?
That should be a B.
Yeah, I never be on mine.
I don't have a B on mine, and I, I copied it off your site today.
Yeah, again, I mean, if you look at it, look at um, five point seven point two, actually, the five is an S. There were, there were font issues when it was trying to be converted.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is a mess, and we.
Well, the language is, the language is correct, but some of the, there are some typos in there.
Well, yeah, cuz it, it starts off with between car, when it should be between four, and it should, I believe it should, four and seven lots located more than, T H A N, not T H A N E, or N A. Right. And then I'm not sure, and so should two be C?
Should be one, A, B, and then two.
One, A, B, and then two?
Correct.
I gotcha. This is confusing.
It will.
They both reference residential subdivision, C.
Okay. So under, under two, within, I take it that should be W I T H I N and no little hyphen?
I'm sorry, where are you, Diane?
Under number two, commercial and institutional. Under number two, commercial and institutional structures. And then it says.
It should be within without a hyphen in it.
Thank you.
Oh, it should just.
Should just say in excess of four thousand square feet.
In, yeah. Structures in excess of four thousand.
Conscient institutional structures in excess?
In excess of four thousand square feet.
Thank you. Well, that wasn't very clear. Alright, under S, under residential fire protection water supply, I'm not even going to try to get into numbers.
Yep.
Under number one, proximity to fire and that protection.
Fire protection.
Yeah, that's totally misspelled. Because even though you tried to correct it, you still left an E before the T.
Yep.
Which is not correct.
I, well, again, I.
Yeah, but it's my, sorry, it's my.
No, that's fine. It will all be corrected by the time it gets to the warrant.
A number two, supplies not, I, I don't know what the, it says supply and then it says something, I can't tell if it's crossed out, I can't tell if it's supposed to.
It should say alternative water supply required.
Okay, because you crossed out the S U something, something, but left the L Y, so I want to make sure that L Y goes away.
Yep, it will.
Okay. On the top two? Yeah, they crossed it out.
Yep. Got that.
Okay, under B, which is labeled H.
Yes. Should be a small B, but it came out looking like an H, correct.
No, it's an, it's an H.
No, I'm, yeah, no, I know.
I brought my magnifying. The first word install?
Yeah. Yeah, I know.
And I believe it should be enclosed concrete or polycarbonate. I believe it's supposed to be cistern, C I S T E R N.
Yeah.
If, could I interrupt just for a second? Looks like we have five more pages of this to, to go through, could?
Well.
We table this, just this one item? To, uh, clarify, it could, it, it is a little confusing, it's not clear. They have it corrected and then.
Yeah.
Me, review it next meeting?
Uh, it won't be at the next meeting.
We would not, we would not.
You'd not be able to publicize it.
Anne is, Anne is gonna be gone until the twenty-fifth. I guess, and this needs to be retyped.
Right, and, and my question is acknowledging there are a number of spelling grammatical issues. They will be, they'll be, they'll be corrected. Do you have any substantial?
Did you not have a meeting on this on the twentieth where you wouldn't allow me to ask any questions?
We, the, our meeting on the twentieth was whether or not we would actually move these forward to a public hearing.
Yes, and you wouldn't allow me to ask any questions, which is not correct because you don't have any bylaws, any rules. I went to the selectmen about it.
Okay.
There are no bylaws, there are no things that says I can't ask a question at a meeting. If you, if a public hearing is done, I can't ask any questions after a public hearing. But when you shut me down on the twentieth, that was wrong, I took it to the.
And that is, that has been the policy and procedure of this board since the day I joined it fifteen years ago.
Yeah, well, it's wrong. I took it to the selectmen, you can take it to them because I asked them to take it to you.
They don't, they did not and they don't set our policies, we'll set our own.
Let's get back on board here.
But anyway, I could have asked these questions on the twentieth and we would not be here now.
I think the, the point that my fellow women were trying to make is, are there any substantive questions on the policy as opposed?
Well, how would I be able to tell if I don't ask?
As opposed to grammatical issues?
Alright, so under the non-residential fire protection water supply, under costs and responsibilities, all there is is a couple of explanation points. What am I supposed to think of that?
Where are you?
Page thirty-seven. It goes one, two, A, B, C, and then it starts with exclamation point, exclamation point?
Yeah, that should be five point seven, that, that should also be non-residential fire, it should be five point seven point three.
So that should be, these things are a mess.
C, D, correct, cost and responsibilities would be D. That's not changing.
Cost and responsibilities would be D?
That is correct, that is not changing.
Well, on my copy.
I, I understand, again, when it was converted from Adobe PDF to the Word document, it did not take all of the letters correctly.
Guys. I'm not, I'm not trying to be mean, but you didn't do due diligence before you sent this to the public.
I, I would say also though, I'm gonna defend myself a little bit here because I know what you're doing. I am always available to people in the town of Rundle to talk with them, to meet with them. I wished you would have come and met with me, I'd be happy to talk with you about that stuff. And it could have been corrected by tonight's meeting. And that was not done either.
Well, when you go to a meeting and you, Alan, I ask a question about the issues that we're discussing tonight, and I'm told that you can't. And that's not a rule, because I looked at Robert's rules, it's not a rule. I brought it to the selectmen and I said I want to see.
I have to ask you to stop repeating yourself and saying it's not a rule, it's not a rule, I took it to the selectmen. You've made your point, move on or cede the mic.
Don't get nasty Richard.
I'm not getting nasty, I'm telling you.
Under number one, at the end, there's a Q one A, is that just a typo? Or is there supposed to be something else left after served by the water supply at the end? Thirty-seven, non-residential fire protection, number one, proximity to white, fire protection, water supply.
Yeah.
At the end of that paragraph, there's a Q one and then an A. Is that just something that got added in during the conversion or is it missing something?
I think it has to be something that's added, I don't have that on mine. At the end of paragraph one, where it says building served by water supply? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, it says served by water supply, but on the pop, copy that I printed off from the website.
Yep.
It has a dot, 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 Q one, comma, A.
Yeah, no, mine, mine has served by water supply or, then it goes into number two.
Alright, see, and I'm missing an or. Thank you. I have a page thirty-eight, but I'm not sure if it's really thirty-eight, but.
Five point seven, five point five?
It's, it's still under that same non-residential fire protection water supply, so my page ends with sprinkler systems where non-residential development occurs outside the route line corridor. All buildings shall require to, shall be required to either, then it has A. Sprinkle the building with an onsite fire suppression system? Should that not say, require that the system have a suppression system? I mean, sprinkle the building? What does that mean, sprinkle the building? How do you sprinkle a building with an onsite fire suppression system?
With a sprinkler system.
It's a sprinkler system.
I'm just saying that when you read it, it, it doesn't come across as what it's supposed to be, it's just a comment. Going to page forty. It looks like it's seven point four.
H forty is outside the, the bounds of this, uh, five point seven. I'm going into five point eight on thirty-nine.
It might not be page forty, it shows up as page forty on mine.
And, and what, what do you?
And it's, it's titled cisterns.
Okay.
And fire pond standards.
Okay, yeah, I see we.
Except on mine, it has cisterns and then a bunch of letters, exclamation points and an M, and then it says fire pond standards.
All the exclamation stuff and the M goes away, it should say cisterns and fire pond standards.
Under B, cistern shall be plumbed, it should be, should it not say shall be plumbed with a six inch drafting outlet?
It does say that. And that's not changing, that's, that's the current language.
Okay, my copy.
Cistern shall be plumbed with six inch drafting outlet with a threaded.
Not with a six inch, just with six inch drafting.
That is the current language from the ordinance, that is correct.
Yeah, the only change to that paragraph was the fact that, uh, we've.
Added an H.
Alright, you added an H, but G is in red.
Correct.
Um, but you might want to change under G. Cisterns shall be constructed. And spell it correctly, please. Then under two, fire ponds.
Yep, there's a typo there. It should be corrected, Fife Paul capacity, should say fire pond capacity.
But then there's also, it says geometric volume of the pond is that volume located from the bottom to one foot, is that what it's supposed to be? So mine reads, the water capacity of a proposed fire pond shall be determined based on the geometric volume of the pond. Is that volume located from the bottom to one foot above the strainer elevation and minus a three foot thick ice pack and the pond surface?
Should be minus that volume instead of the.
I questioned the part after the geometric volume of the pond, that red section.
I believe the word should be minus. Instead of the.
It does, mine, mine says that, but this is all online, didn't we line that out saying we were removing fire ponds as an option? We're going just with cisterns.
I can, I can understand what you're saying because when I read that, it, it does look as if minus is the wrong word to have there.
I would suggest at this point that the board forego this change for this year. And we work on it again for next year.
Yep, that that works for me, yeah.
But I would say like others, we'd take it up for discussion.
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't we take that up as part of the discussion?
We would.
Yes, yes, yes.
Closing five point seven, open five, five point eight, which is floodplain management, which we have talked about. That is our adoption of the FEMA standards as a standalone section in the ordinance. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none, we will close five point eight and we will move on to five point twelve point two, parking lot driveway surface. This was the intent, we were gonna modify.
Yes, so, um, we talked about modifying the parking standards, it would, started out as a modification for seasonal, um, parking.
Yep.
And, um, during the last, um, meeting, there was some discussion. And it was to change the language to say two inch of bituminous concrete surface may be substituted with a minimum of two inch crushed gravel, reclaimed bituminous pavement or similar stable surface material. If a case can be made that the bituminous concrete is not warranted, appropriate bumpers or wheel guards shall be placed where needed and to strike, um, seasonal parking lot surface altogether.
Any questions on? Five point twelve point two parking lot? Hearing none, we will close the five, five point twelve point two and move on to section nine, conditional use. And section ten, site plan review, I'm assuming these are together.
Uh, yes. So the intent is that we have, we, we've had a, a process for conditional use permits, which is different than the process for site plan review. And it seemed that with a totally different process for conditional uses and a totally different process with site plan review, that it was becoming confusing for folks, um, in order to follow what process they needed to go through. And so, uh, it was somewhat clear to, uh, consolidate the two and say that and, I'm gonna paraphrase because this is a fairly lengthy change, but to, to basically say that all conditional uses shall receive site plan review approval. Because it was redundant in the sense that when you're submitting something for a conditional use, you had to submit, you know, plans and the plans had to have so much types of information. And then site plan review, it said the same exact thing. Conditional uses, if you look at the ordinance, has specific performance standards for each different conditional use listed. That's what the conditional use is, but any of those uses that are conditional should just be required to go through site plan review.
Right.
That's the long and the short of, of this whole change, which is fairly lengthy.
Is there any question on? Section nine and section ten? Hearing none, we will close that public hearing and move on to nine, three, twenty-two, mobile food trucks and trailers.
Yes, um, so that was an issue that has come up recently. Um, it was brought to our attention because of a couple of different, um, food truck issues that have popped up. That, um, the performance standards that are in the zoning ordinance relevant to, um, food trucks was not the same as the performance standards that are in the licensing permit application that goes only to the select board. And so the intent here is to make them, uh, both have the same exact performance standards. And the easiest way to do that was to strike all of the performance standards from the zoning ordinance and just indicate that they need to meet the same performance standards as the select board process. Um, the biggest issue that was, that was different was that the planning board process did not have a standard of requiring food trucks to be, um, further than two hundred feet from an intersection. And the select board's review process states that. So that one is more restrictive and we felt that it was more important to go with the more restrictive than it was to, um, not do that. Um, it also ought to be noted, just as an aside, that when those ordinances were originally adopted here in town, they were adopted at the same town meeting. Um, but the performance standards were not cross-checked to see if they were different in any way. And that predated me.
Okay. Any questions on food trucks?
Yeah.
Hang on Marty. It's still the public hearing. Hearing none from the public, I will close the public hearing. Uh, on mobile, mobile food trucks and trailers, it is now eight oh nine and all of the public hearings are closed. Now it's time to discuss them amongst ourselves.
Alright, on your food trucks, is there a number change? Because the selectmen can approve three. But if they wanted to put five in, you have to come to the planning board.
So difference Marty, it's not that one goes to the select board and one goes to the planning board. Under the zone, under the one, the zone ordinance, if there's three food trucks, food truck court that goes to staff review, which is made up of, um, planner, code of laws producer, public works director. Tax collector, taxes tester, excuse me, and pardon me. Having some staff review, that use three or less in the food truck court. If there are four or more, it comes to this board for review. Regardless, all food trucks have to go for licensing permits to the select board. And that's more is whether it's a one day off event or it is a permanent, um, location. They all have to go, um, to the select board.
It, it's not, you, you all set Marty, you have enough follow-up? Great, great.
On, where we had one side for the day already in town, experience which is worth happily.
Um, they possibly they want to put in another. Additional, but where they have way down on the end of the town. Where it is a blind driveway. They put three in. I don't see that as a safety issue.
I'm not gonna get into any particular projects.
This is a general.
I'm just making.
Situation. Yep, I understand that. I'm going to suggest uh, for the sake of these gentlemen from Massachusetts. That we take a look at seasonal resorts. So that we can make a decision as to whether, what we wanna do with it. Otherwise they'll likely be sitting here for the next six weeks. So I'm, I'm not sure how any of you feel about the issue of extending. Uh, another thirty-day period. For the seasonal cottages.
I've got no problem with it.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you know, especially knowing that, I mean, it's gonna be voted on by the town. In June. I don't have any, any issue with moving it forward.
If I may, I do wanna make sure that I point out, um, I don't know if you have that impact.
But at the last workshop that we had, the question was raised of me. As to whether or not um, the extending it by a month had any impact on, on values and for sales. And I did ask um, Beth Newcomb, the tax assessor. And her response was the extension of one month of access to the property owners in Cape Rundle Cottage Preserve will not affect the valuation of the property. So to make sure that that's covered because it was asked.
Do the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Does that have to go back to the state? Because of way it was written per. Uh. As a TIF issue.
I'm not sure if that would impact the TIF or not.
That's what.
Yeah, no, when, when this issue came up, I looked at the TIF information. I talked with Keith about it. Nothing needs to be amended with the TIF agreement at all um, regarding this.
Okay. Any other comments about it?
Yeah, and I just wanna throw out there, I'm not a, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence um. And the, the negative part of me says that it, like Diane had pointed out. Originally it was for six months, now it's nine months and we've been asked twice, this will be the third time to extend it. So I'm, I'm just wondering if it becomes eleven and a half months, is that? Is that still making a seasonal? So at, at what point, no, hold on, at what, at what point um? Is enough enough and, and since you've said you bought seven years ago. At that time, I believe it was six months, so it's, no, well. Well, okay, maybe when you bought it, you, you were after the change, so I'll take that back. Uh, so I think we just, I just wondering, you know, what, when the next one, when the next request comes to us. Is there gonna be any mechanisms to uh, to just draw the line?
But I, I just have a question of what, what difference does it make?
Pardon me?
What difference does it make if it's eleven and a half months, even if it's twelve months versus nine months or six months? They don't have any kids anyway. And even so, like the impact on the school system is three towns wide.
It does because. Somebody could move in if it was twelve months and still go to the school.
Sure, but what's the downside of that?
This was not the purpose of that for. Adding to the school system. Enrollment because the enrollment is being hardened up now.
Hang on, can I respond to that when you? Yep, no, go ahead. Okay, um, as far as the school issues concerned. We don't have children in the schools. We haven't had for seven years. We don't envision it because you really can't go to school. They'll usually start in September and then, and then go back, go someplace else. You know, in, in January, February, March. It does, that doesn't work. Um. If you need anything from us, any type of statement from our board, they'd be happy to provide it because. Really, we're, we're nothing, like I said earlier, nothing but an economic engine. We, 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 we pay. O- over a million dollars of taxes a year. We don't, we, we, the only thing we could ever possibly use is fire and safety and that's basically has to be. But we, you know, like I said, we plow our own roads, we pick up our own garbage, we do everything in there was, was self-contained.
Yeah, I, I, I think my point was just if you're paying the taxes for it, what difference it make if it's restricted or not? To his point, if it's gonna be nine months now, ten months next year, twelve months.
We don't have, sir, we don't have power.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, I'm, I'm amongst the board in terms of that discussion of what's the limit and what's the line, you know? Presumably down the road, what we'll draw on the line in the sand of.
Although.
Okay, well, eleven and a half months is close enough, but you can't do eleven months and three weeks.
Well, not only that, we're, we're zone commercial. I don't know if you, you knew that because of the TIF. We had to be a commercial zone. So to, I, I would think a twelve-month residential neighborhood would have to go to, would have to change to, to. To uh, I'm not sure of this though, would have to change to a residential and we just can't do that with the TIF. Whereas we have to stay as commercial. And so, and we're not looking for that.
You know, I'm, I, I think the, the question was supposed more of a down the road, what, like just to keep in the back of our minds, making the decision what.
One thing you guys have the power of, you have the power of saying no. At any time, we, we don't, we, we, we'd love to vote in the run though, but we don't. So we.
That was, that was my actual question, like when would we say no? Maybe nine months, if we're not.
I, I think, I think we're at that point, actually.
But three years from now, the, the new owners may not think so.
Well, that, that's where you have, that's where you as a board have, have, have the power. But I would, I would. I side with Tom on this. I'm opposed to the idea. I think now is the time that we say no. We've already said, we've already given two separate extensions on the amount of time that we do. At some point, we, we either have to acknowledge the fact that the end goal is, is creep. To the point where it is an eleven-month or a twelve-month situation. Or we stop and we say no, this is the line in the sand and for me, this is the line in the sand. Well, I'm sorry you feel that way. No, and I, I understand you. You know, we, 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 we pay taxes twelve months a year. Yep. We, we, we don't use the facilities except if there's a safety, which everybody gets to use safety. Um, you know, we just, we just want thirty days. We're not looking for anything more than that. This would be, this, this would make it ninety days from, since the, since the facilities were first set up. But, but you know, sir. This is, we're, we're, we're on our own board. The developer is totally out of it. And it was the developer negotiating his, the, the whole, the, the whole development and the whole, you know. The whole cottage system there, that, that has really, we're, we're not that anymore. We're just, we're just the homeowners association. And we, and I could tell you, and I think Ryan can, 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 can say on the board, there is no energy. To increase any more time with this, with this board. And I was talking to the president of the board today and he says, no, no, no one really wants to be there in January, February or March. Cause it's, sometimes the weather gets a little windy and a little cold up here from what, you know, what we're used to. Well, even though I'm in Massachusetts. It's still, it can be a little warmer where I am. So I'm just saying that we're, we have no other. We have no, we, we have nothing that we're going to. Push forward. As a, as an association to come, come back, like you mentioned, I watched the last meeting, something about, let me see my comments, uh, institutional creep. I, I don't, we're not interested, we're not interested in coming before you again. Trust me. This is gonna, this is what we're looking for. We want thirty days and we'll. If we don't get it, we don't get it.
I, I think the point they're trying to make is now you're requesting the extra thirty days in five years. Everybody could have sold their.
But we can, we can give.
I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, I think even more than what you're asking and, and my point is, is I don't see an issue with it being. Eleven months, eleven and a half months or a full year-round residence. Um. But given the, the question we're asked now with the extra, what is it, thirty days, thirty-one days, whatever it is for April. Um, I think that's what we're discussing and, and it's my understanding then, Richard's saying like, look, I'm looking long-term of. It's been, what, seven years or so since the beginning? Every year or so, they've been asked for an additional thirty days and additional months.
Hmm.
Um, and then the thought is, okay, well, to prevent it from becoming. Then a ten-month and an eleven-month, eleven-and-a-half month is, we need to, if it's gonna be a seasonal property, it needs to be stopped at some point between. Where we are now and it being full year. Um. And the question that opposes is, is that gonna be now or is it gonna be when it's asked the next time or the time after that or something?
And then there's, there's always going to be a good reason. To let this one go by and we'll deal with it the next time. And the next time they'll have a good reason we, why it should be dealt allowed then and pushed on. I'm just drawing the line in the sand thing. This is far enough.
Right.
Yeah, and, and of course, we're just bringing up the issues. And I'm not entirely opposed to it. If I, if I own there, I would, I would want.
Well, we love coming, we love coming here. We have citizens.
I can see why.
Though we don't vote.
Right.
We're still, we, we, we still are here, we're active.
But you should be aware that, that I think um, we're not necessarily objecting, but just presenting.
I understand.
Some issues that just to be prepared for a town meeting that.
There's something we can do with, through our board to ease these concerns. I mean, can we stipulate to, to nine months? No, because the, the issue would be the same when you're. Ten years from now, when you guys are no longer around and on the board, whoever's on the board or whoever owns your property. Can come here and do the same thing all over again.
Guaranteed it'll happen.
That's, that's. But.
Could they ask for this again after this then? Ten years from now, at least they know now, ten years they could ask.
Cause they are, this is a different time and each time, if I recall correctly, they said, this is, this is the, all we want. We don't want more than this.
We were, we were told on the last one, we just want the.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm thinking if, if it's denied now. Or turned on now, they could still come back next year and ask for it again. Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but every one of our standards and ordinances are subject to change.
Sure.
I, I totally understand where you guys are coming from. Next year, you know, people could come back and they want ten months. But what we're trying to say now is. Just logically, can we just, if, if April seems to be the start of spring, right? If people could just come and use it for the month of April, we understand like. I mean, we pretty much wanna draw the line in the sand right now that it's just gonna be April. Right? I'm on the board. I understand what you're saying. People are gonna come back maybe in five or so years, but. I mean, the beginning of spring is April, right? Can we just? That's kind of the line is, it doesn't affect anything right now as far as. The town, I mean, I know we could get into the position that we come back every year and then, then it gets to that point. And now kids could go in the school system, but right now what we're asking for today. Doesn't affect the school system or. We're not at that point, right? We're not at that breaking point. And this is us coming from the HOA. Asking for this, we weren't part of, you know, Joe in the developing, coming from that side. This is strictly the. I, I don't know, the last time, I, I've. I guess I've been there.
Twenty-five years.
Oh, yeah.
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 Um. Yeah, I, I know it hasn't. I don't think anybody's come to the planning board to try to extend this since. I've been there and that was seven years, so. I, I'm pretty positive of that, but.
So I'm gonna move that we uh. We recommend the change in the ordinance to move forward to uh, the town meeting.
Okay. Motion by Jamie, seconded by Paul. To move this ordinance forward with a, with an agreed-upon recommendation uh, to put it on the town warrant. Did I get that right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Those in favor?
Hi.
We have a second?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
It's okay. Those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Those opposed? Three and three, motion fails. So we'll send it to this, we'll send it to the selectman with, with a do not endorse motion from the board.
Yeah.
Cause it still has to go to the selectman.
Can the selectmen still put it on? Warrant without our.
The selectmen make the, the inevitable decision as to whether it'll go forward or not.
Right.
You're only recommending to them.
That it's not.
Position.
And if, when it go, if it gets on the warrant, on the warrant, it will, it will indicate select and recommend.
Correct.
Board does not.
Correct. So opposed, just so I get it again, was Ridge.
Marty, Tom and I.
Marty and Tom, okay.
Like it's the ones who've been on the board the longest probably remember the promises that were made.
Alright, thank you.
And the, the, I'm not sure, the selectman will probably hold a hearing on this as well. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
No, because those.
And I wondered if we can stipulate and have it signed by our board and ratified by our, our home. That, that this is where it starts.
No, because I don't think the courts will allow you to bind people in the future.
Yeah.
For what they can do.
But if people lie, they, they buy, they get the violence.
Mm-hmm.
It's easier violence.
Yeah, but you can add bylaws.
We can change our violence. That's true, but I mean, would it help, would it help for us to stipulate that? Sorry.
Would it help for us to stipulate? That this is, this, this is the intent and this is as far as we're going. Well, cause I know that's as far as I'm going.
Let me ask you something. Did your bylaws originally state the dates that were in there now?
Bylaws, the bylaws state the, the eight months. So. And that's what came, that's what came to.
So putting in your bylaws for the future is not gonna make any difference in what it is right now, right?
Sure.
They can be changed.
No, they can be changed.
It could, anything can change. We, your board can change it. Anything can change. But I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I know Paul, I'm just saying, us stipulating. And we're trying, I'm trying to be, we're trying to, to be. You know, non-confrontational because really, when you look at it, we, we really don't, you know. I, I honestly don't think that it would, that it would because people would look at it the same way, Paul, and I, it can be changed.
Right.
Now, one other thing, I, I, I watched the last meeting and uh, Ms. Ross had, Susan, yes, she, she was in favor of it. I, I believe she was feeling that one. I mean, she's not here to vote. Can, can we, can we take a revote when she's here in the full board? No, we can't. We have to get this to the selectmen so that it can get on the warrant and we have a deadline for the warrant. Okay. It's a, it's a legitimate question, but unfortunately. Yeah, thank you. Okay, let's take a look at lots split by district boundaries. I think other than a couple of minor revisions that um. I'm pulling a complete blank. My Alzheimer's is taking over. The, uh, I think Diane had a couple of points that. Uh, she got clarified, but I think, I don't think there were any substantive changes that were made.
No, the only. Change that I saw during that, not during that discussion, which there weren't on, but. It was in the definition section and that was the date, the multiple part. I mean, I think she had some, some questions that needed to be answered and it was an understanding of the difference between density and lot coverage, but. Um, I don't think that there was anything that. Was being suggested for changes to the.
Yeah.
Language.
Okay, so lots split by boundaries. Gentlemen, what do you prefer?
Well, make a motion, we move this forward.
What number?
Uh, two point four.
Second.
Motion made by Tom, seconded by Jamie, was it? Or was that Paul?
Jamie.
Jamie, okay. Seconded by Jamie uh, to move two point four forward with a recommendation of adoption. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? It is you next, oh, Marty's opposed. Five in favor, one against. The next one, section three definitions.
Move that we move this forward.
Who said that?
That was me.
That was you.
Yeah.
I was looking, I didn't, I was looking now because I thought Jamie was gonna say something and then.
What number is this again?
I, I.
Number three.
Number three, the definitions. I was gonna suggest that we, we research and add that effective date in.
Yeah.
I think it would be, uh, and I think that was for the existing mobile home. Definition.
Yeah, right.
As part of that ordinance, so you know, it will, it will.
Is that a second for discussion purposes, Jean?
Sure.
It, I, I will amend my motion to uh, include that change.
Seconding the new motion.
That, is, is that?
That is, is that a substantive change that we would have to take back?
Do I need to retract my second?
I don't think so. That works.
Still second.
Okay, Tom made a motion to. To move this forward with a note of note of accept, a note of acceptance. To the selectmen with a change referencing the date. For the mobile homes. Jamie seconded that?
Second.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
That was just the doors.
Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
That was the ghost of the guy that, you know, wandered out into the woods and left them there.
So six zero?
Six zero, yes. Four point nine disability permit.
Make a motion, we pass that on to the selectmen.
Okay.
War.
Zach and.
Paul Green made a motion, Marty seconded to pass disability permit section four point nine onto the selectmen with a recommendation of adoption. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Hi.
It is unanimous. Five point one estate lots.
Move.
Move, we we send that forward to the select board as well. Second.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by Zach to move. Five point one estate lots up to the Board of Selectmen with a recommendation of adoption. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Five point seven, fire protection. We're gonna, we're gonna table this?
I make a motion.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll second that, I think.
Motion has been made to, by Paul, seconded by three different people.
Everyone.
You can put anything down.
We'll give Marty credit with a second. To table this item. Until we can work it out better. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? It is adopted. Uh, five point eight floodplain management. This is the replacement with the FEMA standards.
A move that we forward that to the selectmen. With cool, with us.
Yeah, Marty.
We don't have a date still. I mean, that's, we're just pushing in the dark there.
I'm not, I don't understand that question.
Well, wasn't there no date so that under FEMA?
Oh, we haven't till.
FEMA wants to put floodplanes all over every town and make every house get flooded.
Oh, no, they've they've given us until July seventeenth to adopt their ordinance. But I don't know what will happen.
But Marty, Marty, the the issue with the definition is it's it's dealing with an exclusion or an exemption. To the ordinance based on pre-existing, uh. Pre-existing conditions and all that that date does is stipulate in in the ordinance, in the definitions. What that actual date was that that the floodplain ordinance was first adopted.
And and that will be the meeting of the town meeting date if we adopt it.
No, it would be when it happened.
Oh, you mean from FEMA.
Forty years ago.
Of that. Okay, that's that's even worse than I thought.
So there's a motion. I need a second.
Second.
I'll second, Zach.
There you go.
Who made, Paul, I thought you made the motion.
I can take it.
I got Tom, Tom made the motion.
Tom made the motion.
Zach seconded.
Zach seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Marty's opposed. Five point twelve point two parking lot driveway surface.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Marty, seconded by Paul to accept five point twelve point two. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Section nine conditional use and section ten site plan review.
I'll make a motion, we move to adopt it and pass it on to the selectmen. Place on a warrant.
There were second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Paul, seconded by Tom to move sections nine and ten. Forward to the selectmen. For inclusion on the town warrant with the, we agree with it. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Nine point three point two two, mobile food trucks and trailers.
I'll move we forward this for approval, but I I will have some comments once.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion made by Tom, seconded by Zach to move this forward with a motion of approval. Discussion?
Yeah, my comment is, it's more of a clerical thing, kind of what Diane was pointing to the other issue. The at the bottom of the first page, four, it has a. Off performance stands finally run the food truck ordinance. There is, and then the next page. Has five, six, seven. So.
Those are deleted.
Okay.
Yes, the clean copy going to the select board will have those deleted.
All right, so that's good. So. That that wasn't clear on this. The the other question is. What is, I guess, maybe I'm curious of it, if someone was coming to the town for approval for a permit. What is the select board standard? What is it? Wouldn't, wouldn't that be our standard?
Most of the standards are the same. The big, the the only real change is that the select orgs say that. You cannot have a food truck within two hundred feet of an intersection. Ours does not say that.
And they have, that's, I take it that that's written someplace.
But that is in their food truck ordinance.
Okay.
Yes.
Is town line? A. Uh. Reference to two hundred feet?
No, just intersections.
But isn't that not at an intersection between one town to another?
No.
It means like roadways.
Okay.
So in in effect, any food truck permanent is entirely out of our hands, it's going to the selectment, select board?
No, again, anything that is three or less in a food truck court. Which would be a permanent court like the one up across from. Goes through staff review. Four or more in a food court. Would come to you already, would come to you. And the select board reviews each individual food truck. For licensing, whether it's in a food court or whether it's a one-day event on some piece of property.
Okay, great. I wasn't clear.
It's it's, it's not clear, it is clear, but it's not clear. It's it's very confusing. More amendments may come at a later date to try and make it easier to understand.
Good, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Are we looking at any of the other towns, like say like Wells or example? That have. More food trucks. Around to see how they. Rev it, roll it, fine-tuned it or anything else?
At this time, no. And the reason being is because we have two separate processes. One is under the select board's hands, and they have not directed staff to do anything with their regulations at this time.
Do we make a recommendation? Well, it's up to the board. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, I I I don't think so.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Somebody move, we adjourn.
Hi.
Okay.
One general comment.
Okay.
And this isn't any criticism, but it is confusing as all hell when you have a bunch of these copies, because we've been versions. And they put dates on them when they send them to us, so we know what version we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're beyond that for this year, but yes.
I understand, but going forward, I think it'd be really.
Yeah, well, I mean, in all fairness, we were working hot and heavy trying to get these things in order for you, but yes.
I I'm not criticizing, I'm just.
That's why we're trying to say.
What I think might help us.
Version two, version three, version four.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Dates are fine.
Yeah.
Not a problem.
Because we're sitting here looking.
Right, that's a different.
And and on the on the fire, you know, issue, I will say that I. Thought that I had cleaned up a copy and got it to hand, but again, we were moving so much paper through or electronics stuff through. I'm not sure if something. Got missed in.
Yeah, but I think even with that, she she got her copy off the web. And I don't think the copy that's on the web has been updated in years.
Yeah, probably not. Probably not. But for the purposes of this going forward at a later date. I will have her retype it so that it is accurate.
Yeah. Good idea.
Yeah. Okay, you got a motion you made?
Well, we don't hear it. We're done.